Said, um, for the cultural center, I believe the final payment was. The final payment was seventy-six thousand?
Okay.
And Brantley Park, let's see, what was that? Uh, oh, um, Davis and Floyd. Four thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Okay, and then I have one other question for the, um, James Island Arts and Cultural Center under general, the sixty-five, what, what was that? Sixty-five eighty-four?
Oh, I see it, um. That would be general running, I can't, I would have a list, but that's their ongoing running operations.
Salary for this, um.
Yeah, utilities, yeah.
So that, so that'd be monthly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, hearing none, thank you so much, Merrill, now for the administrator's report, Ashley.
Okay, um, I also sent you all in a separate email, um, the entire traffic study that was done for the Festival of Lights, um, by Stan Tech in partnership with CCPRC, um, and attached a memo, um, in the packet, it just kind of hit some of the highlights, the recaps of, um, some of the changes they're going to implement as a result of findings they found in that report, um, some revised ticket pricing due to, you know, discounted tickets on um, lower attendance night versus nights with the traditionally higher visitation, um, you know, working on maybe some alternate traffic routes in the future, um, looking at, um, their marketing, marketing team is looking at various ways to educate visitors on those peak visitation nights, um, and then certainly some other things that we can help with such as approved signage, um, and coordinating the city Charleston on altering, uh, some of the timing at that lamp, it can't, uh, lamp light at Camp and Folly. So, let's see, um, but please let me know if you have any more questions, if you have any questions about that. Um, town is participating, um, in the BCD cog cha- in the chamber, um, as a partnership on a regional recovery and resilience plan, um, so I did attend a kickoff meeting with that public sector group, um, and that kind of ranges everything from flooding to traffic, um, but so far we've just kind of had that, that kickoff. Um, we are moving forward, um, we received a grant from Charleston County Community Services for uh, about sixteen thousand to help with some repair care projects, so there's two roofing repairs, um, roof replacements rather that, um, we've identified, um, for that funding, um, so I'm going through that process, um, and so hopefully we'll be able to bring that to offer approval next month, um, on the match, that is. And, let's see, um, as Merrill mentioned, we had a project closeout with the Arts and Cultural Center, um, had a great grand opening, um, I thought we had really good attendance, um, I was excited that, you know, um, Caroline was able to, you know, get everything installed and end up and running it like she was able to do, um, but truly want to thank town staff for their help with that, uh, Francis Merrill, Public Works Department, Thomas and Douglas, really, um, helped, helped get everything together, so, big thanks to all of them, um, and we have, um, received our, um, unique link and, and information on, um, applying for the American Recovery Funds, so, um, we're working through that process, and that is all I have.
All right, well, thank you, Ashley, are there any questions for, um, the town administrator? All right, we're hearing none, uh, let's go on to, uh, the public works report, Mark?
Yes, good evening, um, so this is the public works report for the August month. Uh, there were two new requests for service in July, one was drainage related, staff responded to all requests. Staff held monthly meeting of stormwater managers and staff has been monitoring the White House Boulevard drainage and sidewalk project. If you go down there, you will notice that, uh, there is the sidewalk, the, um, asphalt part of it is in, and today they installed the curb and gutter for the. For the concrete part of it, and they are also, um, starting the, uh, drainage part on the church side. It's interesting to note on that, that they, when they were digging down, they got to groundwater, so that's gonna be an issue. Staff met with South Carolina DOT to about the, and a slip lining contractor for Dills Bluff and Fort Sumter, they're supposed to start that tomorrow, so Councilman Milliken, um, I think our resident will be happy with that, if indeed they do start, otherwise I will field that call, uh, staff participated in IGA meeting between county and city for division of road maintenance in mixed jurisdiction neighborhoods. This is something that they just want our approval on, they don't need to have, uh, anything in writing or whatever, because it's really between the county and the city. Uh, staff participated in flooding four-one-one webinar series from Clemson Extension, this was open to the public and, um, was, was really just to make sure, you know, that I knew what was going on and what the public was being told. Staff participated in county debris contract refresher meeting, and also the drains committee meeting. Uh, staff cleaned six signs in, uh, August and installed two new stop signs and used eight bags of pothole patch for for potholes and stop, uh, staff has been cutting vegetation on our right of ways to make sure that we have proper, um, vision triangle sites, uh, it's the growing season, so, uh, Douglas has really been busy out there trimming things, and that's all I have to report.
Well, uh, thank you, uh, Mark, uh, are there any questions for the, um, public works director? All right, well, hearing none, thank you so much, let's go on to the James Island Creek Water Call Alley Testing Data, Mark, are you going to give that report?
Um, well, I really wasn't prepared to give that report, but, uh, if you want to know about the data, uh, Ashley, did you send the data out to everyone?
Yeah, it was included in the packet.
Okay, all right, um, well, as per our, um, I, I guess we're gonna vote on the agreement tonight, um, but there has been.
No.
No?
We, we passed the agreement in December, Mark.
Okay, um.
Maybe Councilman Milliken.
All right, well, thank you.
Your request, did you just, did you have any specific questions or any, any further?
Yes.
We can look into.
Yes, thank you, um, one of the things that I felt that was really important was to, uh, base our decisions on uh, some of these sewerage, uh, issues and septic tank issues on the data that, at hand. And I was, um, very encouraged to see that we have a pretty good program of data collection already underway, and that's pretty good. But what I was really hopeful for is some additional data, uh, that has to do with some of this source DNA analysis. And I know that we had through the James Island Creek Task Force, um, had Charleston Water Systems step up and do a couple of these DNA analysis studies, which were very helpful, um, and just to kind of, um, give a brief, uh, um, data set or a, a comparison, um, they assessed, uh, the DNA of the E. coli bacteria from human, dog, and avian bird species on two different occasions at three different sites, um, and what they found was pretty interesting, in the March, uh, data collection, uh, there were elevated levels of human, if I can find my graph. You know, I could probably, I don't know if I can share this graph with you or not.
You, you should be able to share your screen if you'd like.
Yeah, let me, let me try to do that, I've never done this before, so, uh, it's pretty exciting. So, here, let's see, share screen, right there, desktop is here, maybe? Okay. It might be happening, I don't know. I've got a security and privacy screen up here right now. And I've got the document open, how do I get the document to that place?
Is it the, um, is it the same one you sent me earlier today?
It is.
You want me to share it?
If you can, that would probably be good, because I've never shared anything before like this, there you go. All right, so it's the upper graph there, Ashley, if you could scroll up. Right here, yes, all right, now, what I did, I, I appreciate receiving all of the data, um, that you all sent, but oftentimes it's really hard to kind of get a feel for what it is unless you graph it, so I went ahead and I graphed the data. And what we have here, um, in the top graph up above are the, uh, Ellis Creek Source Tracking of E. coli, and the two different dates are in the blue bars, uh, we have the March testing numbers, and the only, uh, orangish bar that you see here is from the May testing. Uh, most of the data that came from the May testing did not register very much E. coli at all in any of the testing locations. Um, so that was kind of a moot point in May, but you could see in March, we had pretty high levels of human E. coli, um, at the JIC one location and, uh, at the SC one locations. Um, so these are two relatively high things, and I talked to Mark Johnson, or, or had a couple email exchanges with him earlier, and he said the, um, numbers that you want to, don't want to get beyond are about a hundred, hundred and four, pieces per one hundred milliliters, right, uh, so that's down around here, and you could see that we do have elevated levels of some of the other species in our March reading, the positive thing about these data are though, that if you look at bird, bird here, bird here, and bird here, these are three different locations, and they're consistent. And birds are everywhere, so their E. coli and DNA are going to be everywhere, and the fact that it's consistent is somewhat reassuring. That tells you that you have some pretty good experimental control over this, so that was interesting to see. So, these are the species comparisons based on two different data points, and what I would hope that we could do, and we'll be discussing this later, is perhaps funding some additional, um, po- point source tracking of the DNA of the contributors um, to the E. coli issues that are in the creek, at this point we only have two data points. So it'd be interesting to see what we get going forward. Now, the lower graph here, Ashley, and I don't know if y'all can see that, there you go. Um, these are two different testing dates, uh, the beginning of August and then the end of August here, uh, blue and gold, respectively, and you could see that, um, we have two different testing sites, which is, uh, kind of the Riley Road and then the Harborview Bridge, and you could see that we have pretty high levels on that, um, Riley Road location there, um, compared to the Harborview Bridge, Harborview Bridge is closer to Plum Island, if you will, on the creek. Um, but it was interesting, uh, when they, when they give us the data as single numbers like this, it's often hard to visualize how the levels fluctuate in different locations as a function of any type of, um, parameter. So I think it's useful going forward when we get data from the water systems to go ahead and graph it, and I'll be happy to do that, um, as we re- as we receive that data, but I think it really is helpful to inform our decisions going forward about how we want to proceed with some of the practices we're doing to control, um, E. coli and water quality in our creeks, so that's all.
Well, thank you for that explanation, uh, Councilman, um, Milliken, I was, um, in the bottom chart, R-one, R-two, R-three, R-four. Those were all the same location, we have two different gates, but.
Different, different samples, I believe, from the same location.
A lot of variation in the samples, aren't there?
There are, um, but that's the thing about water.
So we sh- we, um, started, I have, it is not entirely clear to me why, um, our memorandum of agreement with the city and the county started, um, gathering in August rather than a long time ago. But, um, uh, we've done two months, the, uh, agreement is that we will measure the information in the bottom chart monthly, and the consultants, Walpert, is responsible providing quarterly, um, reports. Now, I'm, I'm, I think that they will share us the reports as they come each month, and that we should, those should be public somehow, and you know, be glad to share them with council, though, um, I certainly hope that Walpert will provide us our quarterly reports with some graphs and analysis, and as we get bigger chunks of data, you know, particularly like at least one quarter, but you know, hopefully multiple quarter in years as we move forward, we'll actually be able to see trends and have a little better information, but I, you know, this, this is great. But I think we should be able to get charts provided to us front by the, um, consultant. The DNA information, uh, well, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, yeah, sadly, our contract with them says that they just have to re- give us the raw data. So, we may have to be responsible for making sense out of it by putting it into graphic form.
Well, we'll see, let's hope not. All right, um, anything more?
No.
So we were, um, working on the, um, next would be the Island Sheriff's Report.
All right, let me, uh, give me just a moment to promote these gentlemen up.
Unmute, all right, we're unmuted and start video, hey, 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 how you all, how you doing? All right, great, great, so, uh, first I want to start off by saying that, uh, let's not forget that rescheduled was obviously National Night Out, so National Night Out coming up, which is going to be October fifth, um, and it's going to be six PM to eight PM, and we'll have all of our toys out there, uh, we'll be, uh, d- doing the same thing that we normally do, of course, and that is, uh, do a lot of community stuff, uh, with everybody, so we're actually going to have, uh, um, a, all the normal toys out there, and we'll still be bringing, um, we won't be able to bring the helicopter, because we don't have anywhere to land it, but we'll be bringing, uh, a lot of different things, uh, little gifts and stuff that we have that we've kind of gotten along the way. Um, cops on the coop, so the next Friday is Cops on the Coop at Chick-fil-A on Folly Road, and that's where we raise money for Special Olympics. And we have, uh, that comes, goes from seven AM to seven PM, right there at the Chick-fil-A, and there'll be, we'll have different shifts out there, really about seven to ten of us, maybe even eleven, and what we're doing is raising money for Chick-fil-A, I mean, excuse me, from Chick-fil-A, and the customers, of course, for Special Olympics, and a hundred percent of that money goes to Special Olympics, so we'll be out there all day, we'll be sending out a flyer for that. That is on that Friday, so we have a, an event Tuesday on James Island, an event Friday, and then Monday, we're doing what's called Faith in Blue, there's hundreds of departments, thousands of different, uh, every year do Faith in Blue, it's one of the new things that they started doing a couple of years ago, and what it is, is bringing communities together with the church, and so we combine ourselves with a church, and we actually do some type of an activity, and it goes from Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So Monday we'll be on James Island, we'll be at First Baptist Church, which is right there, obviously in the parking lot of Town Hall, we'll be doing what's called trunk retreat. And, uh, the town, that's graciously, uh, offered to assist, dealt with some of the candy and everything, so that we can provide that for the community, and so hopefully we're gonna have another great event, so that's three events on James Island, that we're gonna have all within a matter of six days, so it's hard to complain about that. Oh, and so we're doing a lot of stuff in the community, but before I take any questions on that, I'm going to give you the crime report, um, so on August twentieth, uh, juvenile was stopped at, um, Jeffrey and Fort Johnson on August twentieth in a silver car, and they ended up getting a, uh, jar with some, some drugs in it, and, uh, got a, a gun, and he was charged uh, for having a possession of firearm under age of eighteen, and obviously marijuana, and he was on the way to high school. Uh, at the island car wash, we had a break-in there where Damian Washington was seen breaking into vacuum machines and stealing quarters, he tried to flee, and he was, uh, arrested and charged and, uh, with a few charges to include petty larceny and resisting arrest, and obviously damage, uh, to the, uh, coin operating machines. We had on, uh, August twenty-first, eight-eighty quail, we had a couple fishing rods stolen from the back of a boat, those have not been recovered. On August twenty-second, we had a auto break-in and a tag stolen, so a victim's, uh, Ford Ranger was entered on Harborview Circle, and the registration and, uh, it looks like, uh, in a rear, oh, the tag was taken, I'm sorry, the Virginia tag was taken, but the wallet and the tools is on the vehicle was left, and we have not found the, uh, found the tag yet. Uh, on, uh, August twenty-fifth at Hale and Centerwood, we had a traffic stop in reference to a, uh, Mr. Brown refused to stop, and he fled on foot while holding a dark colored bag, a deputy chased Brown, while other deputies detained the passenger in the car. Brown was located behind a church on Camp Road and brought back to the scene, the bag that was dropped during the chase had, um, a lot of marijuana in it, and a, also a gun, and he was charged with the drugs and unlawful carrying of a handgun and fell asleep at blue lights. A Desmond Champagne was charged, if y'all remember, uh, there was a armed robbery in front of the Casa Fiesta, eight-oh-eight Folly Road, and he was charged with possession of a weapon during a violent crime and armed robbery, and he's been, since, since last meeting, he's been arrested. Uh, White House Plantation on September second, we had an unlocked residence that was, uh, entered, and the victim believes that she knows the subject who actually entered it and responsible, um, for stealing, um, some firearms and a jar of change. James Island Presbyterian Church, uh, larceny of car parts, so some catalytic converters were stolen on August thirty-first for eighteen hundred dollars, or eighteen hundred hours off of a Chevy, uh, some Chevy Express vans. Uh, Clark's Point, twelve-oh-four Julian Clark, we got a Porter Cable six gallon air compressor that was taken, neighbor saw a white male, had been seen there riding a bike earlier and carrying tools. We also recovered a stolen vehicle using, utilizing ALPR, a red two thousand fifteen Hyundai Sonata, it was reported stolen through Mount Pleasant, and was located the next day by Deputy King. And last, we had a, uh, window that was broken to gain entrance, a power, a power table saw was stolen on uh, September twelfth, in the twelve-hundred block of Stone Post, and also obviously we had a fire to the church on Camp Road to, I believe is at Fort Johnson Baptist, if I'm not mistaken, oh, that was, that was right there, um. First, do we have any questions about any of the, uh, the activities that are coming up?
I do, could you, could you, could you go over the dates again?
Yes, ma'am, so October fifth, which is a Tuesday, will be National Night Out, that's where we get the community together and we bring out all our toys, and, um, I will DJ that event as well, just so y'all know, um, scratching records, um, Mr. Councilman Milliken will be singing, um, so, uh, so anyways, um, and also if anybody knows how to get in touch with Marilyn Clifford, I'd really like to, I think it'd be really special if she came and sang the National Anthem, uh, anybody has had to reach out.
This is, um, October fifth, huh?
Yes, sir, October fifth, Friday, October, October eighth is going to be, uh, the Cops on the Coop, which is going to be at Chick-fil-A, seven AM to seven PM raising money, hundred percent of the money goes to Special Olympics, and, um, that's a, that's a big day, it's a big thing for us, a big deal, Harold Phillips, who was a sergeant with us, just retired, his son has Down Syndrome and raises a lot of money for that, and, uh, we usually do really good, and they do that for all the Special Olympic stuff that comes, they can travel and everything. And then October eleventh, trunk retreat at the church right there in the parking lot, and that is for Faith in Blue, and you go on faithinblue.org, and you can see what all the different agencies are doing around the country, uh, trying to bring communities together, uh, and bring churches, because the best way to get your community a lot of times is through the church, right? I mean, you know, the church has a grip and a handle on a lot of the, a lot of the people, and we're able to make connections to the church.
That's awesome, thank you, and thank you for, for all that you guys do, I most certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely, anybody have any questions about the crime?
Okay, all right, hearing none, um, is that all, um?
Mayor Chris is talking or he's singing, I'm not really sure which one.
I was speaking. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, one of the things I would like to quickly talk about, because I don't think it's very well known, um, what the sheriff's office is doing, but I'm part of our quick response team, and what that entails, it's basically our heroin task force and substance abuse task force, there's a handful of us that are on the team. Um, since April, we've had thirteen total overdoses on the island, and twelve out of those thirteen have all been in the town. I've responded to every single one of them, part of my job on the team is to follow up and help trying to get the individuals into treatment so they can start the process of recovery, I responded to one earlier today, um, he almost didn't make it, but luckily fire was able to narc him in time and bring him back. But a lot of things we do is after the overdose occurs, we wait till they normally get out of the hospital, unless the hospital recommends we come straight there, and we get, we bring a lot of the information we have, we can bring mental health counselors with us, substance abuse counselors with us, and we follow up with these people, we start the process of encouraging them to get back into recovery, to get back off the substances that they are using, um, so far we've been successful with a couple people on the island and gotten them successfully into treatment, and I've been following their progress with them, and continuing to encourage them to, you know, stay on the right path to continue treatment, so they can successfully recover from their addiction. I wasn't sure if the council or Mr. Mayor, Ashley, the town administrator, if you guys were aware of that or not, but that is something we are actively out here doing on the island, and so far it's working in our favor.
Thank you for your service in this area, it sounds like an important task.
Yeah, since.
Questions for Deputy?
Chris, that one's on Johns Island today, right, you had to go to Johns Island?
Uh, this one was on, he was on Johns Island, but he's always, the last couple of times I've dealt with him, he's over here on James Island. Yeah, unfortunately, this is like the fifth time he's overdosed in the last couple of months.
Councilman Milliken, yes?
Are there things that, um, we could assist with at the town to help get the word out about this program that you're a part of? Um, as far as like a direct contact line or something about that, perhaps for people to get in touch with, uh, the necessary agencies for help before they overdose?
So we have, um, a pamphlet that we developed that, um, put together all the different resources in the tri-county area that, with, whether it's, you know, a shelter or a treatment facility, it's got a lot of information on, and that's what we've been going out and handing to people, so, uh, if everybody's okay with, I can put, um, a stack of those in the town hall, I could also give them to each of you, if you'd like individually, if you know of good places where we could hand them out or set them up at, we have a tremendous amount that were printed, so it's, I can get them no problem. Um, I think that would help, um, maybe in the future we could do, if I can get some of the team members together, there's only a handful of us, and the handful of us have to handle the entire county, so, um, I can speak with our captain in charge of it and see if maybe we can put together some type of forum, if people would want to attend, that, maybe that would be helpful.
Mm-hmm, very good.
Well, could, perhaps, I, you know, this might not work out, you know, could it somehow be connected to National Night Out, could we, somehow?
Yes, sir, there's no reason that we can't have those pamphlets out there.
Have the flyers available.
Absolutely.
People to talk about it, perhaps definitely, talk about this.
Absolutely, Chris, yeah, we'll have a table out there.
But certainly having them, and, you know, bring some, and we'll find a place to put them at the, in the lobby of Town Hall, and we'll, we'll talk to Ashley about how we can promote this in our social media.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we're, we'll actually have a table out there with, um, with a recruiter out there as well, so we'll, um,
That's great.
We'll, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or? All right, well, thank you so much, Lieutenant James and Deputy King, appreciate all you do. All right, so next we, um, have requests for approval by staff, and the first is the award for lobbying services, says if there's no objection. Says if there's no objection, I would like to move that to after item thirteen, the executive session on our agenda. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we will go to the next item on request for approval by staff and that's landscaping maintenance for Camp and Folly intersection. Ashley, would you speak, explain that?
Yes, um, so I sent you all, it was unfortunately, I wasn't able to get it in the packet, but I sent you all. The quote from Hart Pine Landscaping. The cost is three fifty monthly and that's a bi-weekly visit. And he does also have, like we do with Harborview Road, sort of an annual fee, one-time charge. He's calculated about forty seven hundred dollars and that's trim back all the palmettos, re-mulching the area. And then cutting back some of the plants that need it, like the sweet grasses and things like that.
Or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Well, second, any discussion?
I I have some questions. So can you tell me like what size, what all is this covering? Is it just right there in front of like the new bank or is it all?
No, it it covers the sort of the entire project area that was the Camp and Folly intersection project area. So that goes up to Eugene Gibbs. It goes down a little bit past the Walgreens. It goes all the way on the other side in front of Volts and Hammered and across the street. I think it stops at the Auto Auto Zone.
But a simple way to look at it is that the sidewalks were installed some years ago. That's the Camp and Folly project area. Though I'm not saying that the landscaping that was installed is the exact same place, but it's landscaping related to that area.
We have an approximate square footage amount for that or no?
I I do not, I could get you that.
Okay. So you're saying it's from like like Chick-fil-A basically down to like Auto Zone. On both sides.
I can pull up a map and.
Yeah, that would be.
You may pull a map, okay, let me look for it real quick.
I'm sorry it could be difficult, but it just seems like a lot for. For. Like three fifty a month, so I just need to see more of what it covers.
And that that is a. Twice a month visit.
Yes. I understand. And this goes all the way down to Goodwill, is that right?
Yes. Um, let's see. So this is kind of a little hard to look at, but this is the. So this is Hines. This is where the horizon is. Here's the Camp and Folly and actually and it goes down in front of the VFW too. So here's the circle K. And. Circle K on the other corner. And Walgreens and then that section of folly.
Right. Yeah, just at first glance, it seemed like a lot to me personally, but when I look at where it all is and the fact that they're right on the side of the road. Perhaps.
Any? Any other questions or further discussion? Councilman Milliken.
Yes, would this also include watering? When things get very hot and very dry in the summertime, will they also irrigate the plants in these areas?
It does not include watering, because there's no irrigation at the along this intersection. The, you know, they installed plants that typically don't need the irrigation. But yes, I understand that's one of the issues we had with the contractor. So the reason we're just now even have this before us is because there was a warrant, a year or. A year warranty period, the contractor that actually installed the landscaping. Had to finish out and was responsible for maintaining. So there were some stuff, there was one dead palm and then there was, you know, some dead sweet grasses that we made them replace. Before we actually said we would take over per the agreement.
Yeah, that's one of my concerns about not having irrigation that will be probably replacing many dead things moving forward. It takes a while for those plants and trees and shrubs to get established. And my hope would be that perhaps they could forego some of their trimming and try to irrigate those locations with the new plants. Is that something that you could ask them about, Ashley?
Sure. And we also, you know, the public works department, we do have. It's a little more than a, it's like a giant watering tool, like a big bladder. I'm not sure what a tank, I'm not sure what you call it, but. But we've used it, especially like places where we've had to seed. You know, where like some drainage issues and we've had to see, you know, and need to go out and water things. So it's something we can certainly do in-house too.
Right, any other questions or comments or discussion? Hearing none, let's bring this to a vote. Would you please call a roll, Francis?
Councilman Bowles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miniano.
Yes.
Councilman Milliken.
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax.
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey.
Yes. All right, let's go on to the next item, you know, that passes and so we'll go to the next item installation cost radar speed signs. For a lighthouse in Fort Johnson, if you please speak to that, Ashley.
Yeah, so we've already approved the cost of the actual. Are you all have already approved the cost of the actual radar signs and we also received a CTC funding. Match funding for it as well. This is the cost for the actual installation. We reached out, there are two. DOT approved contractors that they've already pre-approved to install these devices in there right away. So the estimate we have, I think it's, I'm sorry, I've lost my place in the packet, but I think it's seven thousand. Seven thousand forty four dollars. Was was the bid.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I make that motion.
Is there a second, Councilman Mullinax, the motion and I see Councilman and Councilwoman Miniano is a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll, Francis?
Councilman Bowles.
Excuse me. Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Milliken.
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax.
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey.
Yes, and that passes. Also now let's go to scope and fee for Woodhaven Drainage improvements.
Hey, so we have Justin Towah StanTech here tonight. Be Justin.
Hey, guys.
Hey, I asked him if he would, I I know that we have or he has, I think, gone over the assessment that they did. For the Woodhaven Drainage Assessment. At the Drainage Committee a while back, but this, Justin, if you just want to give a brief overview. And then the cost that we're asking you all to prove tonight is the actual design and construction plans for these drainage improvements.
Sure, thanks, Ashley. Good evening to the council and mayor. So the Woodhaven subdivision constructed approximately in the nineteen sixties. And they use corrugated metal pipe for the drainage pipes in the subdivision. And so with the subdivision being about sixty years old, pipe just facing issues with joint failures at the joints of the pipe. So we had the system videoed and you can actually see water infiltration into the pipe system. Furthermore, we saw a section of the pipe where tree roots were actually growing into the pipes. This, these two items, they cause silt and sediment buildup into the pipe system. Which in turn blocks the flow of water downstream into the ultimate outfall, which is upon at the eastern edge of the subdivision. This in turn has caused flooding issues along Highwood Circle. And there was one residence at six seventy seven Highwood Circle where you can actually notice the water level rise. The water level on their house. So what we what we did, we did an analysis and we determined that with all these issues, the system should be replaced. And upsized to meet current standards. The, as I said, the system was designed in nineteen sixties and the design standards were much less than they are today. Today Charleston County typically has you designed for the twenty five year storm event. So we are proposing to install another run of pipe in addition to the existing section of pipe to be replaced. And these two elements will help the system to flow properly and prevent drainage. We would recommend the use of concrete pipe instead of the corrugated metal pipe to help with these long-term maintenance issues too as well.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, I'll say I heard, I'll say the Councilman Mullinax is the second Councilman Milliken moved it. Okay, any further skinny discussion? Any questions for either Justin or Ashley?
I'll just say real quick that the project total twenty nine thousand six hundred. Again, that includes survey, some wetland delineation, construction plans permitting, and then the bidding and construction. We did have this have this budgeted, but also it is one of the projects we've identified for some American Rescue or American Recovery Plan funds.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Miniano.
That's okay. I would just like to say that I'm sure we are all very excited about getting more of our drainage issues addressed. I know these people who live in this neighborhood will be looking forward to it too.
All right, any other? All right, so with the town clerk, Francis, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Bowles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miniano.
Yes.
Councilman Milliken.
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax.
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey.
Yes, and so that passes. So next we go to the Brantley Park signage count, Ashley, would you speak to that?
Yes, so this, this, the sign cost was not in the contractor's bid, so it's something separate that we would pay for directly. It seemed like everyone was really pleased with the design of the Arts and Cultural Center, so we kind of went with that. Theme again, and the city of Charleston has agreed to pay fifty percent of the cost of the sign. And also this, it's similar to our Peony Park sign as far as the frame and the town hall sign, but also. In Peony Park that we have to also say that the park was purchased with funds from the Green Belt portion of the transportation sales tax. That's a requirement that we have to have on our signage.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion for consideration.
Is there a second? So I'll second it, any discussion?
Yes, I'm.
Councilman Milliken.
Yes, I I think the sign looks very nice and I like the fact that we're starting to get what I would consider to be a town of James Island brand. Established with respect to our signage of different types of our facilities within our community. We have one more sign that we have to do and that's Dock Street. Dock Street is the odd sign out, so perhaps that's a future consideration we can make. So that it appears like the other signs that we have in the town and people will recognize that as the town of James Island brand. Just a consideration moving forward.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, let's bring this to a vote. Town clerk call the roll, please, Francis.
Councilman Bowles.
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Miniano.
No.
Councilman Milliken.
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax.
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey.
Yes, and so that passes. So now we'll go to the next item on the agenda, legal fees for drainage easement work. Explain that, Ashley.
Yes, Green Hill Drainage Project, so later on in the agenda, we have a resolution for the remaining easements. The last ones that we need. While none are contentious, it's just some property owners that, after years of trying to work with and just hasn't been able to. Our right away agent consultant is hasn't been able to acquire these. And so is requesting or is recommending that we move forward on condemning these as well. And so Mr. Mitchell has done the easement work on the the prior drainage easements that we've that we've condemned.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? So I'll say Councilwoman Miniano made that second and Councilman Bowles moved the motion. Any discussion? Well, hearing none, with the town clerk, please call a roll.
Councilman Bowles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miniano.
Yes.
Councilman Milliken.
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax.
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey.
Yes. All right, so next we go to action items, we have TOJI funding for water quality testing. So that item was asked for by Councilman Milliken. Do you have a motion or what do you want to do?
Yes, I would like to at least get a few more data points for the DNA analysis of the point source testing. For E coli that is going on at the three testing locations in James Island Creek. This isn't part of what we're doing with the county and the city. This is something above and beyond and a little more specific with respect to the type of information and the species that are contributing to the E coli. Levels that are in the creek. So we have data from March and May of this year. And what I would ask is that we get a few more data points so that we could get a handle on what the contributing factors are in our E coli problem. So I'd like to see us get samples in October and December of this year, at least during the cooler weather months. And then perhaps even based on that, moving forward into February. Of next year. In other words, to try to get a more complete picture of sort of the fluctuating levels of E coli that are in the creeks.
So, well, I guess I'd speak to that, I so our agreement, our. Agreement with the city and the county includes as one of its provisions, optional DNA testing for species. It's the fourth provision. And we can go forward with that with Walpert, the consultant that the town, the city and the county. Has working on this project, though we would need to get a consensus with the county and the. county and the city that we should do this, and I would recommend that what we do is at the next meeting of the James Island Creek Water Quality Task Force, we bring this up and get a consensus in that group that the city, the county, the town should move forward. And if we use that approach, then the town will pay about a third of the cost. And the city about half and the county a little less, about, you know, fifteen percent or something is how that comes out. So, you know, it's based on the shares of our jurisdiction in the in the overall TMDL area. And I've brought this up with Councilwoman Honeycutt and she seemed favorably disposed. I brought it also, brought it up also with Councilwoman Jackson and she was more favorably, you know, she seemed to think that this would be interesting, you know, is important, you know, would agree with your assessment, Councilman Milliken. But yeah, what I would hope is that the Water Force Task Force would have the county staff people there. And we would get some information about how often should this should be done and a consensus of going forward and share and caution. So I personally don't think that the town should bear this cost for these other jurisdictions, you know, bear the entire cost and we should get some expert advice about what's the best approach. You know, how often do we need to get these measures? And and then if we're not satisfied with the consensus, we'll be back to, well, maybe we have to do it ourselves. But I don't, I think it's premature to make a decision tonight that we pay for all of this ourselves without bringing this forward with the other, with our partners.
Yeah.
Anyway, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I think I can, I can understand what you're doing and I would like to have some sort, some form of consensus with council tonight as far as saying that it's a good idea and our council is at least agreed in principle to going forward with this testing. I think it is important because we've already seen quite a bit of variability in the data from March to May and even within samples, as you noted, for the overall E. coli counts that are even within a single location. All right, so I think that it's certainly not, we're very far from being systematic in our approach. So I think that as many samples as we could have would probably be better. I would like to at least have a vote or consensus from council that it's a good idea moving forward, so we could bring that to the water quality meeting as a data point for them that we are very interested and keen on doing this.
So Councilman Milliken, I move that the the council recommends that the county, town and city exercise our option for additional DNA tests.
There you go. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion of that motion? Francis, do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So, because otherwise I probably would repeat it slightly differently. By accident. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, would you please call the roll, Council?
We're voting on the amendment. Yes.
A motion. Just an emotion.
Okay.
A motion to exercise the option. Well, Francis, can you read it back?
To move forward with the county, town and city to do additional DNA testing. I will get the specifics when I do the transcript.
Okay, thank you. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Miniano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolsey?
So yes, and so that passes. The next action item is, well, is there any further discussion on this agenda? Okay, the next item is research of use of American Recovery Act funds for homeowner drainage release, relief, excuse me. I believe Councilman Mullinax asked to put this on the agenda. Would you, would you like to speak to it?
Oh, yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be rather brief on, rather brief on this. It got me thinking when we did all that research in that study and it turned out that was the responsibility of those three houses on Schooner to pay for a flooding issue that was, you know, putting their homes and property in jeopardy. It'd be about seventy some odd thousand dollars for three households. And of course, as you all know, that'd be pretty high for a lot of normal households. We've got two unique situations. One, we've got these rescue recovery funds which can be used for flooding issues, oh, among other things. And I thought perhaps I could have staff look into the feasibility of like basing on household income, severity of the flooding issue and various other criteria that they may develop as this progresses. To see if this could be something that we could look into using some of these rescue recovery funds to help some of these people who may be having severe financial issues because of flooding issues that may be on their property but have no fault of their own. And also too, of course, it hasn't been approved yet, but a lot of municipalities should be receiving sometime down the road a windfall from this infrastructure, one point two trillion dollar infrastructure bill that's working its way through Congress right now. And I hear that when the states get their blocks, a lot of municipalities will probably trickle down. I'm not sure how much it will be, it'll be based on population and whatnot. That's something else that we could perhaps look into using. But all this is tonight, it's just asking or requesting the staff to look into the feasibility of doing this and then getting back with us and just letting us know what they've come up with.
So, so that would be a motion to have staff research the use of American Recovery Funds for homeowner drainage release, relief.
Yes.
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Milliken second says, any discussion? Hearing none, the town clerk, please call the roll, Francis.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miniano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolsey?
Yes. So that passes. So next we'll go to committee reports. First, we have the Land Use Committee, Councilwoman Miniano.
I do not have any report this month, thank you.
Next, we have the Environmental Beautification Committee, Councilman Milliken.
Yes, this report is from James Island Pride. James Island Pride is the Citizens Council for the Environment and Beautification Committee. We had a very successful adopt a highway litter pickup on September fourth where we had thirty two citizens volunteer and they were able to remove forty four large bags of trash from our island roadways. Special thanks to members of the James Island Charter High School, Boy Scout Troop Forty Six, the James Island Exchange Club, the Town of James Island and several James Island families who participated. Our next pickup is going to be, I believe, October fourth from nine to eleven. And we'll certainly be posting information about that pickup as, as we have it. Citizens who wish to get involved with James Island Pride, I would encourage you to do so. We meet on the third Thursday of every month. We're likely to start meeting via Zoom, so if you're interested, you can email myself or Amy Ball, the Chair of James Island Pride, to get on our email contact list. Also, we're looking for individuals and groups to help us with Helping Hands. Stan Kozakowski is our contact person. And basically Helping Hands is an organization that helps people who aren't otherwise able to, to care for their yards. Stan's contact information is eight six zero eight four seven zero five four four. That's eight six zero eight four seven zero five four four. And if you're a member of a community group and would like service hours, this is a great opportunity for you. Stan has specific dates for these opportunities, and that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you, Councilman Milliken. I have no report for the Children's Committee. Next is Public Safety Committee, Councilman Mullinax.
Yes, just that we'll be having a meeting next Thursday, the twenty third at seven o'clock. And then, of course, as Lieutenant, Lieutenant James said earlier, we do have that National Night Out on October fifth from six to eight. And I hope you'll be, I hope, you know, at least I hope this year will be nice and crisp that day and not the typical hot summer nights that we've dealt with in the past with these such events when they're in August. But, but other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
All right, well, thank you. Next, we have the History Committee before the History Council met last month. And we got a report from the Chair about airports on James Island Historical Airports and correcting historical signs. And then we also discussed a history trail on James Island, particularly particular signage identifying various historical sites on James Island relating really to our booklet. Any questions about the History Committee? Next, we go to rethink Folly Road and our next week Folly Road meeting is going to be Wednesday, October, October twenty seventh at three thirty in the afternoon. Any questions regarding rethink Folly Road? Okay, next Drainage Committee, Councilman Mullinax.
Yes, we had a meeting, our third quarterly meeting this past, oh, it was August the thirty first. And we really, we hit quite a few issues. We spoke about James Island Projects including the James Island Creek Basin, the James Island Asset Management Program, Central Park Basin and Lighthouse Point Basin. And then we talked about seaside Honey Hill Drainage Easement. And then the quail run drainage system evaluation, Dills Buff Road Outfall, and also we ended it by talking about the Simpsons Creek Rehabilitation Project. And we had representatives from both the county and city there, which gave us some very interesting information. And Mark Two was able to supply us with a lot of information and a very productive meeting. Our next meeting will be sometime, we haven't set the exact date yet, but we'll know it'll be sometime in November, most likely because of the holiday. Probably be in early November, I'd have to guess, but when I get that date, I'll let you know and hopefully I'll know by our October meeting.
All right, any questions for Councilman Mullinax? Okay, next is the Business Development Committee, Councilman Bowles.
No report?
All right, thank you. Next goes to the Tree Advisory Committee. Next we go to the Advisory Committee, Councilman Milliken.
Yes, the Tree Advisory Committee met on September fourteenth. We're in the process of gathering and comparing information related to local tree ordinances and tree protections with the hope of generating improvements to the town's tree ordinance. The idea is to provide additional instruction as to tree species recommendations and better placement guidelines. We will be having a call for tree internship applications in November to resume the island wide tree survey this spring. We're also watching the pots that hold our live oak seeds planted this past spring with the hope of having a seedling distribution to James Island residents at one of our events in the future. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next, we have James Island Intergovernmental Council and that is tentatively for October twentieth at seven PM. I believe that that council, we would be, will be getting a report from our rethink Folly Road consultants about the rethink Folly Plan. Any questions? Hearing none, let's go to Proclamations and Resolutions. The first is Resolution Twenty Twenty One, authorizing the exercise of eminent domain for the purpose of the Green Hill Community Drainage Improvement Project. Ashley, would you speak to that, I guess?
Yes.
We've talked a bit about it before.
Yeah, there's four, four remaining parcels that, that we need to condemn and in speaking with the right away agent, again, nothing, nothing controversial, no one really just no one saying, no, I do not want to give, you know, drainage easement. It's just really just trying to get in touch with, with people and family members.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I do.
Councilwoman Miniano makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
That would be Councilman Milliken second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the town clerk, please call the roll, Francis, please.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miniano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax?
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey?
Yes. I think I skipped the, or, so that passes, and I think I skipped the order on the agenda. There was a proclamation recognizing October two thousand twenty one is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I believe Councilman Milliken asked to put that on the agenda. Would you please speak to that?
Sure. I'll just read parts of the proclamation and not the whole thing, if everybody is okay with that. Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in women and is the second leading cause of the cancer death among women. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that about twelve point four percent of American women will develop breast cancer during their lifetimes. And whereas more than two point eight million breast cancer survivors living in the United States today are a testament to courage as well as the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines and offering treatment to those who are affected. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of James Island, South Carolina does hereby recognize the month of October twenty twenty one as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and ask all residents to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate successes and memorialize lost battles.
That, I'll take that as a motion in favors. Is there a second?
Second.
With the town clerk, please call the roll, Francis.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miniano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax?
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey?
Yes. So that passes. Next, we go to ordinance is up for second and final reading. The first is twenty, right, ordinance twenty twenty one oh six, Regulations on Routine Inspection and Maintenance of Private Septic Tank Systems. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I would like to move to amend. I sent, Ashley sent you a copy of the proposed amendments earlier. And the, and this involves dropping the definition of baseline inspections, which is under B. Definitions, one, that whole section. And then when we get past all the definitions in section A B, adding, dropping baseline and adding inspection as recommended by SCDX. And removing baseline throughout the document. Is there a second to that proposed amendment?
I'll take that consideration.
Okay, so I would speak to it. I believe that at least my intention was that DHEC, South Carolina DHEC recommends in the past, at least two or two to three years, more recently, every year to every two years, an inspection of the, of a septic tank. And then part of that inspection is the determination whether it needs to be cleaned out. And then part of that inspection is the determination whether it needs to be cleaned out. And so if the inspection shows it needs cleaning, then it would be cleaned. The way the dot, the current version of the ordinance is written in baseline inspections are defined in such a way as they require cleaning the, you know, pumping out the septic tank. And the general recommendation for pumping out septic tanks is every three to five years. And so, you know, every three years, we'd be requiring people to pump them out. And for the most part, four years or five years would be appropriate. And if you look at, if you research this and just look at the S C, South Carolina D HAC website, actually, whether they need to clean out, it's not like just every three to five years. It depends on the size of the septic tank and the size of the family. And so there's an entire table. And three to five years is more for large families and small septic tanks. And that a large septic tank can say a single person in a home, you know, would not need to be cleaned out. So the inspectors would come and they would look at it and say, nope, still doesn't need it. It's been four, it's been six years, but you're still good. But what we want is for people to and to check like they are, it is recommended by South Carolina D HAC and not necessarily have extra clean outs that aren't needed. Not have a clean out every time it's checked, but rather check as recommended. And then if needed, have the cleanup. So that's why the purpose of the amendment. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilman Milliken?
Yes, I, I, I am opposed to this amendment because I think that we're coming into this sort of with a new thing. And we haven't had a regulation of septic tanks on James Island. And it seems to me that the baseline inspection mechanism is essential, especially given the fact that we have septic systems that might be out ten years before an inspection or a pump out. I just think it makes sense that if we're passing the ordinance, that everybody start from zero with a good, solid baseline inspection where they're pumped out. And we could test the perk, potential of their drain field and everything that happens with a baseline type of inspection. I think we should start from zero so that we, we can ensure that the septic system is working the way it's supposed to work. And I think that you get that with the baseline inspection. Also, I have another idea about this. And I think that it wouldn't be a terrible thing if we could use some of our funds that we're getting from the federal government to pay for this initial pump out and inspection process. Going forward, this would at least allow us to identify septic systems that are working quite well and also identify systems that need repair and potential sewer in rather than septic. So I think that this would be a really good first step in the evaluation process that would also be part of our James Island Creek cleanup. Because we could identify systems that are working well and give attention to those that aren't. And I think you get that with the baseline inspection more so than you do otherwise. So these are my general ideas about this baseline inspection. I was encouraged to see that the first time that this went through and thought that it was a very good idea and a good means of making sure that everybody has a well-functioning system as we launch into this process of having monitored inspections of septic systems.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Councilman Bowles?
I thought I agree that the baseline is important. I think maybe some of the mayor's concerns could be addressed. What if we amended, instead of every three years, you just change it to five years? And we're still getting the pump out, we're still getting the measurements done, but maybe if every three years is too onerous, you know, we just push it out to the end of the recommended range, which would be five years. It seems like it would be important to do if we're talking about James Island Creek and other waterways being so polluted from unserviced septic systems. So those are my thoughts. I'm not making a motion. I'm not making a motion. That's just kind of my thought that I'm sharing.
Well, the baseline inspection language just comes from the city of Folly Beach. They do not require baseline inspections at any particular time. But rather when houses are sold. So perhaps some houses are turned over very rapidly, and so they would have these pump outs. All the, this, this reg- regulation would be required. But for most people, they would not, there would be no such requirement. It is only when they would sell their house and a new person comes in that there would be this requirement that it be pumped in and thoroughly tested. Now, D HAC recommends that septic tanks be inspected every two to three years. But the inspection does not mean that they be pumped out. It just means that they be looked at and determined whether it's necessary to pump them out. And so the requirement that we pump them all out like right away, or anyone that has not been done in the last three years would be a requirement beyond what D HAC requires and would include people that the inspector says, well, you don't need to have yours pumped out, but we're going to make you do it anyway. And then second, the ordinance is not just today, we will pump them all out. It's forever, every three years, everyone has to pump out their septic tanks, whether they need them or not. Now, I agree that the five years, it would be an improvement rather than requiring them to pump them out every three years. But on the D HAC website, there is a schedule that is based on the size of the septic tank and the number of people living in the house, determining how often they need to be pumped out. And, you know, it's like ten years for some circumstances. But it's like a single person living in a house with a, with a larger size septic tank. And so it is not necessary to pump them out every, every three years. And but they should be checked by someone at some reasonable time. And I think that three years was reasonable. And so that's why I propose the amendment. I, I oppose this ordinance. I would vote against it if it were to be, require everyone on James Island has to get it pumped out every three years, whether it's needed or not. Or that we're just going to do this because we want to create a baseline. I think the language of baseline is was set up by the city of Folly Beach, and it's for each new family coming in. And we are not in a position, I don't think that it would be easy for us or practical for us to try to just enforce an ordinance where we have the, have careful inspections when properties change hands. The way the city of Folly Beach is able to do this is that when someone asks for water service provided by the city of Folly Beach, when the name changes on the water service, there is a requirement that the, to be a complete test of the of the, of the septic system, that it be pumped out and be carefully tested. And so, you know, say for my house, I don't have a septic system, of course, I'm hooked in the sewer. But, you know, we haven't changed the water system, you know, the water service in over twenty-five years. And it's true that if we sold the house to someone else and we, you know, we had a septic system and we had Folly Beach's approach, then it would be carefully tested. And that's not an unreasonable approach. I do think it was, it's better to, to have our, the regulations we're proposing, which Folly Beach doesn't have, which is that people are required to, that the ordinance is required that they have it tested and it is only cleaned out at the inspection, that they're inspected periodically. And if the inspection shows that a clean out is necessary, then it will be done. And so I strongly support this amendment. And really, I would, you know, would be very much opposed to any effort to just require everyone with a septic tank on James Island to get it all pumped out. Now, whether or not help, you know, pumping out people, you know, everybody's septic tank, whether they're affluent or poor or what other situation is, is a appropriate use of of, of American
Rescue Plan?
Rescue funds. It may well be, you know, I think that's possible, though it is certainly question, you know, there is some question about that. You know, whether we can do that or not, but and I, I'm not really sure that is a wise use, though, you know, certainly we don't want to throw the money away. Maybe it's necessary, desirable, but I think the idea of let's pay to clean out all the, everybody, you know, let everybody clean their septic tanks now is not the same thing as creating an ordinance that, you know, for the first, you know, until the ordinance is changed anyway, that we, every three years, people are required to at least inspect it and determine whether it needs to be pumped out. And if it does need to be pumped out, it should be, rather than an approach that says, well, every three years, it needs to be pumped out, whether it needs it or not. And I, you know, I can't support that. That seems, doesn't seem sense.
Mayor, I have
any other discussion? Yes.
I, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we are passing an ordinance now to regulate septic systems, something that hasn't existed before on the town, in the town of James Island or on James Island. And I guess what I'm saying is that we're starting a baseline. All right, we're starting a baseline. Let's get everybody to start a baseline by pumping everything out and doing a baseline inspection the first time. This is what I'm proposing, not three years from now. Three years could be a standard inspection. But I do believe that this initial test is an opportunity to identify systems that are working well and those that are not functioning as they should. And the only way to really do that is with a baseline inspection. I also do believe that American Rescue Plan funds can be used for this process. Because ultimately, it is about protecting our watershed and our water. And it does have to do with wastewater and other things that the American Rescue Plan funds. So I do think that this would be a useful way to go about it with a baseline inspection the first time. It's paid for by us. And then after that, it's up to the homeowner to maintain their system. If we identify a system that isn't functioning, that's a whole nother order of business that we're going to have to tackle. But I think that it's very important to identify those systems that are working well and those that are not before we go ahead and take the next step of supering an entire street or community without knowing whether or not that's the best place to put our funds.
Okay, um, so this ordinance as was written, whether amended or not, does not accomplish what you've asked for, Councilman Milliken. It does not say that we will go throughout the entire town and everyone must have, right now, their septic tank pumped out and inspected. And then we do that one time, and then we'll have some other ordinance that would apply in the future. This ordinance would be, would be that, you know, some people, I'm sure, have followed the D HAC instructions and they have had their septic tank inspected last year. Right? And so they would not be required to do anything. It's just when the three years comes up that they are required to do it. Now, I agree that there may be some people who have never had it inspected or had it inspected ten years ago, or, you know, that we may have a large backlog of people who haven't had it inspected. But this ordinance, again, does not say what will happen now. It does not create a baseline in the way you're describing it. It is rather a permanent, an ordinance that will apply permanently. And that each person, based on when their last inspection was, they will have to get one, they will be required to get a inspection and not necessarily have it pumped out, only pumped out if necessary. And so if Councilman Milliken, if you would like to have a requirement that all septic tanks be pumped out next year or during some period of time, and this would, you know, what you suggested, then that would be a different ordinance. And I would recommend that we amend the ordinance, this ordinance, as I've suggested. Pass this amendment, pass the ordinance. And then consider, have Councilman Milliken consider different ordinance to achieve the goals that Councilman Milliken is, which is have everybody right now pump out their septic tanks and create a island-wide baseline for all the septic tanks are found.
Oh, I, I have a question.
Yes, Council, Councilwoman Magnano?
Okay, so I, I think that we need to have like a, a baseline of where all these septic tanks are. And as far as efficiency and leak and all of that. So, and I'm not making a motion, I'm just, I'm just saying, perhaps we need to say, you know, maybe we could amend it to say, if you have not had it inspected in the last year, you need to have a baseline inspection. Or, or we can amend it to, this is a, just a thought, to amend it to say your first inspection is a baseline inspection, and then every three years, you have a, a non-baseline inspection.
Yes.
Councilwoman Milliken, do you like that option? Where we, where we all start with like a baseline inspection? And then we maybe amend this ordinance to say, after your initial baseline inspection, every three years, you can do like a regular inspection of your septic tank?
Yes.
So then we need to vote on your amendment first, Mayor, right? Is that correct?
That would be one of approaches. So if there's no further discussion on that amendment, would you please count, call the roll?
I have a, I was gonna interject something here.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman Bowles, do you, you have for this?
Y'all are close, everybody's pretty close to agreeing on this. I think maybe with just a little bit more time, we might be able, instead of stacking ordinances on the topic, maybe we can just do one, do it well. If we're going to make changes, you know, maybe the thing to do, and I'll, I'll move now to just defer this vote to the next meeting to give time to actually go through the changes and make something that maybe everybody feels good about. Instead of amending right now on the spot, you know, and, and do it as best we can on the spot. But maybe with another month of actually looking at the writing, we can all come up with something that everybody will get behind.
Is, well, there's a second to defer, would be before you speak more. So there's a motion to defer, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we actually can discuss whether to defer it. Councilman Bowles spoke towards deferring it. Any other further discussion on?
I'm so sorry, Mayor, I couldn't hear you. Could you please repeat?
Is there any further discussion on the motion to defer?
I, I do. I think that, I think that deferring would give us the opportunity to address the citizens who have been diligent and in maintaining their septic systems. And perhaps you could rework this language to address those people and also address the people who need a baseline inspection and make it fit so that it's not punitive to people who have been doing the right thing the whole time.
Any further discussion?
Yes, and I would volunteer my services to help in the rewrite of the ordinance if you're amenable to that.
All right, well, I just have one comment. So, you know, we proposed about six months ago to have consultants come and work in an ordinance that would be appropriate for our community. And this council rejected that and said, well, we'll just have the town attorney come up with something. This is it. But that's all I, that's my only comment. So let's go ahead and bring that to a vote. Would you call the roll?
Councilman Bowles?
This is the motion to defer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Molenex?
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey?
Yes. All right, so that's been deferred. So now we go to ordinance twenty twenty-one oh seven, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two annual budget. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second for discussion.
All right, so this, any, so it's been moved and seconded. Is any discussion?
It may be premature, given that we did It may be premature, um given that we did not pass the previous ordinance. Um, but would like to perhaps consider revising um that fiscal year amendment to our budget um so that we can include the cost of the pumpouts of the septic systems if we choose to do that going forward. And I feel like we're somewhat in a um hard place here. Uh unless we defer this ordinance till next time, and we have a consideration of the cost of the pumpouts.
All right, any um so is that a motion to defer?
I believe it is a motion to defer.
Is there a second for the motion to defer?
A second.
All right, um, so uh is there any discussion? So Councilman Milliken explained that he wants to defer it because he may want to add to the um budget uh funds to um clean out, pump out uh septic tanks. I would recommend that we go forward with the um budget amendment. There are items in this budget amendment regarding various drainage projects that I think that we want to go forward with and that they are not inconsistent with um adding funds to the budget for um sewer pumpout that we don't, we we can add. We can amend the budget again to add um sewer pumpout funds, if that's something council determines is appropriate. Or if it's not something that we can fund under other existing um budget lines. So I do not favor deferring it. I think that we can approve this even if there are other things that may come up that we may want to spend this money on.
I I do, so could we possibly? Because I think the drain, it just really important. What if we approved the drainage part of this um budget amendment? And we deferred the second half regarding sewer until our next one meeting? Can we do that? Is that, is that a possibility?
Um, you, I think it's, it is a, I I would think it would be a possibility, yes.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of procedure, we have a motion to defer the entire thing right now. I guess, I don't believe motions to defer are amenable, and so we would need to vote this up or down, and if we wanted to um have a different motion to defer a part of it, that that would be um a separate motion. So we need to go ahead and vote on this.
I would, I will withdraw my motion to defer. Matt, could I do that procedure?
Well, I, generally, if there's no objection, is there any objection to the withdraw of the motion to defer altogether? Okay, so since there's no objection, that's withdrawn, and so Councilman Mignano wants to, again, instead propose that we defer um funding, um our commitment to help fund uh sewer expansion and uh approve the drainage portion. I mean, yes, approve the drainage portion. Yes, Councilman Bowles.
That's correct.
Does that, oh, is that, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Bowles, would you like to speak?
Thanks. I think we all, we would be okay with uh passing the amended budget, because correct me if I'm not reading this right, but as far as I can tell, and what I remember from our last discussion on it, it's, we're just amending to reflect that we're accepting the three point seven million dollars. And that's really all. It, I I tend to agree with the mayor that if we were going to use any subsequent funds for pumpouts, that probably qualifies under maybe the capital projects um line items or something else. Um, I mean, there is a sewer infrastructure project line on here, for instance. Uh, uh, just in the, it seems to me that the mayor might be correct. We can, we can just ref, we can amend the budget to reflect we're receiving the funds, and if we need to carve out something to take care of the septic tanks later, we could. That's, that's my read of it.
I I thought my my perception was that the budget line items that we saw that we're voting on right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, is partially for drainage projects, and then the other part was for septic tank slash sewage or or um sewer line things. So I I didn't take it to be like the approval of us taking the money. I thought it was distribution of funds. Is that, did I misread that?
See, it's both of them, but um, you know, unless you want to take money from drainage projects for the, I, I just, I don't. At no point, so for example, tonight, we um approved um doing the, approved the design work for the um Highwood Circle, the project, drainage project, right? And so at some later time, uh assuming that moves forward, before council will come a proposal to um construct it for a lot more money, several hundred thousand dollars. And so council has to approve each expenditure item. And so this budget does not tie council's hands to approve some total amount for any particular project. Nor does it um, and I, though I would think it does not, you know, I so I, you know, I don't, I don't think it restricts us from spending money from the American Rescue Plan on sewer pumpouts, if that's what council wants to do. So I don't believe that we need to defer any part of it. Yes, Councilman Milliken.
So um basically, the budget amendment summary, these figures are just fictional for what they're slated for, right? We haven't cut a check to anybody for these amounts
No.
for specific purposes. Um, so for example, uh, we're not going to cut a check to the PSD uh for sewer in a particular neighborhood or anything off of.
Council hasn't approved that yet.
That's right. All right, so therefore, um I guess it's yeah, we haven't approved that. Um, and technically, that money could be approved for something else, is what you're saying, like a pumpout process and identifying other areas. But council will be involved in the decision-making process. I guess my concern is, once we cut the check to the PSD, that we're no longer part of that process. Is that correct?
I would you know, I don't foresee that we would be cutting. You know, I I'm not sure exactly the um the process. I don't think it's been determined. I don't see it as we write them a check and then they go forward with it. It would be more like um we would have to agree to go forward. There would have to be some agreement between the town and the PSD. And then it would come to council to approve some specific agreement. And then what I have in mind is, you know, after the construction is done, we, you know, cut track checks, is the way I would see it, as we generally do. Right? We don't generally pay contractors upfront to do projects. The project gets completed and then we pay for it.
Right.
And but usually, it's frequently, we don't pay, you know, they do a little bit, we pay some, do a little bit, you know, that sort of thing. That that's what I would foresee, but um that has not been determined. We haven't reached that point yet.
All right, so we're still very early in the process, and like Councilman Bowles indicated, um, there's not really any harm in approving the whole um budget modification right now, because we still have control over how the money will be spent.
Yes. Um, so we, I guess we are still on the motion to uh defer um everything but the drainage portion that was moved and seconded. I would, you know, against approving it, I think we should just go ahead and vote for the budget amendment.
If these funds aren't totally designated to go for like, like if we set up flexibility and control over where these funds go, then I could withdraw my motion to partially approve.
All right.
And we could just go back to the original ordinance.
Okay, is there um any objection to a, the, to drop consideration of this motion to defer? No. Hearing none, um any further discussion of the budget amendment? All right, um, hearing none, um, would the town clerk please call the roll? Francis, please.
Councilman Bowles?
I'm voting yes to approve the amended budget.
Yes, that's, that's the motion before, it's a yes.
Okay, yes.
Chairman Mignano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax?
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey?
Yes. And so that passes. So we have no ordinances up for first reading. Is there any new business? Hearing none, um I move that the town will go into executive session um in accordance with thirty-four seventy uh Code of laws of South Carolina in order to discuss contractual matters regarding consulting contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, uh would the um town clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mignano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Mullinax?
Yes.
Mayor Wolsey?
Yes. Okay, so you should have received contact information. Um, did you want to speak, Ashley?
Yeah, if everyone will just, um, you know, turn off your mic and and video and um go silent and then just call in on the conference call that I emailed everyone.
Troy, I've got you, I'm muted and set up here.
All right, so. I guess wait a minute, Councilman. Bowles isn't here yet. There we go. We are now returning to regular session, no votes were taken or decisions made in executive session. And so now we'll go on to returning to the issue that we deferred. A ward of lobbying services, is there a motion?
I make a motion for discussion.
What motion is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were calling for a motion.
I was.
I'll move. I move that we hire the capital group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I thought we were very fortunate to have two very good applicants on this. And they seem very flexible and willing to work with the town and both did an extraordinary job. I think both of them plotted a very similar course of action with respect to. How they would go about our problem. And that left it up to one thing, and that was really the cost, and that's what I'm basing my decision on.
All right, any other discussion? Councilman Bowles?
My discussions with our area representatives leads me to believe that the. The bill that we've been, that the town's been so interested in has very low chances of ever. You know, being a priority on their list, and I think if we don't have the folks from our area advocating. For it, it'll be a really hard sell for even the most talented lobbyists to get. Legislators from other parts of the state to vote in favor of it, and as we heard at the tax. Cost sharing workshop that we, we brought the folks from Columbia down. James Island is the only municipality that is entirely contained within a special services district. It's the only one in the state. So this, it, the bill. You know, to, with the hope that we might somehow grow the town. Would only apply to James Island, making, to me, making it less interesting to anyone from anywhere else, because it doesn't really. Couldn't really help anybody anywhere else either. I know that it is helpful to have people in Columbia, and we have a lot of people in Columbia. And they all, I mean, whenever I've reached out to our senators or house members, they call me back and. Answer my questions. And I think that we could spend this money on something. That will more directly benefit the residents of the town of James Island, and it might come up later. Some new need may arise later for lobbyist, and I. I think it's a healthy exercise to, to have interviewed these folks, you know, maybe we can keep them in the rolodex. But I would, you know, I'm speaking now, and I intend to vote against hiring any lobbyists. And I know that all the folks that submitted bids are all very talented and we would, you know, anyone would be lucky to have their services. I don't think the town will be, and the residents of the town. Will be well served at, at this time for them, so that's what I have to say about that.
Any further discussion?
Now. Of course, I understand, Councilman Bowles is saying, but there's also the issue of, you know, the rescue funds, and there's also the rescue. The, the issue of. Down the road of the hard infrastructure money, which. Depending on the other infrastructure plan, when or when that gets passed or not. But a lobbyist can help us get that money, or at least get us all fair share of that money. Because, you know, I think every town, every municipality of any size will probably be competing for as much of that as they can. So I kind of look at a lobbyist as helping us in that too, there's other issues that a lobbyist can help us with, other than that's just that one issue. So that's just kind of my two cents on that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, with town clerk, please call the rule.
Did you stake the motion?
To hire the capital group as. Our lobbyist.
Councilman Bowles?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Miniano?
No.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Councilman Mullenax?
Yes.
Mayor Woolsey?
Yes. And so that passes. Okay. Next item of the agenda is announcements and. Coles and comments, so we'll start with Councilman Bowles.
Hope everybody stays safe, be good to each other, thanks to the town staff again for all your work since the last meeting. And it's good to see everybody, I look forward to us being able to meet in person again. Thank you.
Councilwoman Miniano?
Just thank you to everyone who's worked so hard, we appreciate all the things that you do.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes, everybody, please continue to wash your hands, wear your mask in public places. And take good care of yourselves, we're still getting very high numbers here. And we have to take precautions to stay healthy.
Councilman Mullenax?
I don't have anything to say, but thank you.
Okay, well, as I do at most of these meetings, I just would urge all of our residents of James Island to get vaccinated. It's the best way to protect yourself and others from. From this pandemic and. You know, we are making, we've made substantial progress, you know, our estimates are imperfect, but it, it looks like approximately seventy percent of the eligible people. On James Island have had at least one shot and. You know, I'm not sure how many are completely vaccinated, they haven't shared that with us, but we're doing pretty good here on James Island, you know, but please, you know, it would help. Thank you. So there being no further business, the meeting is now adjourned.
Right.
And I.